To order, if you join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, Women, and Clifton. Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Bennett, this is absent. Alderman Ideman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Move on to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Fall in favor.
Aye.
No presentations tonight and no personal appearances. We, okay, we'll move on to the city administrators' report.
So I don't have an update for you. I know that surprises you or disappoints you, but no. Just to go over a couple of items, David Bova and I will be attending a ransomware tabletop event put on by the Department of Public Safety next Thursday down at Cave Gerano. It's a training exercise on what happens if you get ransomware into your system and how you can resolve that. And there'll be a number of different people there, so we'll get different ideas and probably get some other input as to what we should be thinking about if that happens. We hope it never happens. We don't have to leave out. We had bid openings today. We will get those two here for the water main. The bid actually came in lower than expected, so we may be able to do some of the alternates that we had put into it. So that was some good news. That'll be, we'll bring that back to you at the May 25 meeting. And then we'll have sidewalk replacement bid openings next Tuesday. This is for the owner sidewalks. And we will have the city hall bid opening next Tuesday as well. We had to push it back. Steve Bacon couldn't make the original pre-meeting, so we had to push the pre-bid meeting to this past Monday, and we'll have the bids next Tuesday. We have a number of subcontractors and a few generals that were here. We hope to get good bids back on that as well. Any questions?
Oh, Happy, I could have one, I'm sorry. I think as far as this street sweeping schedule is a positive, especially for people getting vehicles off the streets and stuff, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Happy.
Can we go back to that then real, what's the easiest way to access that GIS database so that people can?
We have not published it yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, but we have not put it up as an individual file to look at yet.
Okay.
But we do have it on the system at this point.
Any other questions there? Okay. Move on to staff reports. First up, Chief Steiger.
Good evening, everybody. Should have a copy of my report. Biggest thing I'd talk about tonight would be the grant things we got going on. At the last board meeting that I was at, we asked for and got approval for a expenditure of $38,141.94 for radio purchases. I tried to get those bought the next day, and there had already been a price increase, so it didn't make it to the end agenda this time. But the next board meeting, I'm gonna be asking for a approval increase of $3,600, $3,664.56, to a new amount of $41,806.50. I have been talking with my grant lady, and she says that we were originally approved for $42,138, so we will still be within the funding that we were approved for. There won't be any additional cost, but it'll have to come back to you guys through reapproval. However, we have to do that. It was put in Hornets Farm, so that'll be coming to you at the next board meeting. The 2023 grant, I've been working on it. I ran into a little complication on the online application process. It's somehow or another tying into last year's grant on my narrative, and I don't wanna do anything that messes up the last year's narrative, so I've asked for technical assistance from the DPS, when they're supposed to be contacting me back. It's due tomorrow afternoon, and the only thing I have to do is put in a budget item and narrative and everything, and I should be good on that one, but it's whether or not I can get them to give me a quick enough answer to fill it in. The ARC grant, I did the two-and-a-half-hour webinar on what you have to do to spend the money, so right now I'm waiting on the approval for them to go ahead and start getting the prices, and then we'll be ready to start looking into the purchase of the equipment on the ARC grant. And probably the only other thing that I would mention is we did get out another application last night. I'm very excited about this one. It's an 18-year-old female. She doesn't live in our district, but she has asked to join our department, and she is completing her firefighter one and two at this point. So if she passes the background check and everything goes good and we put her on, we'll bring in on another certified firefighter, an 18-year-old at that, which is what we really need on our department.
Excellent. Cool. Do you open any questions?
I don't have a question, Kenny, but just, I guess you'd call it a comment and stuff. Just wanted to personally thank you for all the hours you've been putting in. Anybody that ever passed a firehouse and doesn't see him there, that's a rare occasion, but I don't know of anybody that puts in as many hours as you do for nothing, and I appreciate it very much.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Just also, we'd like to congratulate you on the award you received at the annual Chamber Gala as well. Very well deserved, so congratulations. I know everybody that was there was very excited for you and was. It was very deserving.
I was surprised, to say the least.
Yeah.
Thankful for it, but like I said.
They're pretty sneaky.
Especially our city administrator.
Yeah.
Like I told him the other night, too, I do what I did out there because I enjoy it, but a lot of what I am and who I am is because of the people I'm surrounded with, both out there and down here, so I appreciate the support that I get too. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to tourism director, Tanelin Doge.
I'm short, and I feel, I don't know, odd behind this thing, so I'm just gonna stand here, okay, and talk to you. Maybe I should do this. So this was inadvertently attached to your pocket. It actually was a staff meeting, but some of the content is accurate. But what I'd like to do is direct your attention to, on the table there, you have, you have this, it's just a little slide deck, okay? And in it, it talks about some just wonderful advances that we've made, okay? So we have found somebody that is gonna be able to meet our needs as far as the website. I've got the hours and the costs there. They are subject matter experts in tourism. They have 25 years' experience, and I'm not gonna go into all of it, because I think I emailed all of you that information, so you have their proposal and also their capabilities. So the other thing I wanted to mention is that J. Rodney, they have a special relationship with Visit Widget, okay? And if you'll flip to that, what you'll see is Visit Widget, you know, we never go more than nine feet away from our phone. In fact, people check their cellphones about 96 times a day. I've got all kinds of interesting stats, and so we know, we really do know that, you know, being on a mobile device, especially in tourism, is a place that we need to be. So Visit Widget, I wanna give you some high-level information, because when I have, when I meet with the Tourism Advisory Board Tax Commission, we're gonna have a live demo on the 16th at 6 o'clock, so I invite everybody to tune in for that. And I will also be sending links to, out to the community so that they have all the information to give me feedback about it. You know, Ken was saying that you really can't do the things that you need to do without support and collaboration, and this is definitely true for this approach. So Visit Widget is a top-tier tourism cloud-based solution provider, and what they have is, as you can see right here, you know, they have 208 apps. They're kind of like, you know, the best of the best. There's only one in Missouri that I'm aware of, and that's the Lake of the Ozarks, and they don't actually use, you know, all of the capabilities, because it is a lake, they're not trying to do passports and check in and different things like that. So what this is gonna do, what problem is it gonna solve? What it's gonna solve is people are looking for a planner, a trip planner, so when they come to our website, okay, or they use the mobile app, they'll be able to plan their trip, they'll be able to know how far it is, how much time it's gonna take, they can share it with family and friends. We can have themed itineraries. On the analytics, on the backend of it, we'll be able to see what's working, what's not working, and because it syncs every 16 minutes, let's just say that, you know, you run out of salmon, and you have a special, and maybe you wanna say, hey, we're substituting salmon at our restaurant, you know, for, I don't know, some, you know, shrimp on the barbie or whatever, you know? So what I'm saying is you can do that if you're promoting your business, and you can also say, you know, if the road is closed because of traffic. There's lots and lots of different ways to do this. We have a basic plan. The set of fees, $3,000, that's a one-time fee. I think that I can probably get $1,500. I'm hoping that Missouri Tourism will pick up $1,500 of that. And what that does, what I'm recommending, you guys, is that we go with six months on the basic plan. Why is that? Well, it's gonna take us three months to clean up the website, okay, 'cause all of this is driven from the website, right? All the content, what's accurate, what's not accurate, okay? So we're gonna clean up the current website, really tighten it up, then we're going to, so we have three months for that. We're looking at basically the end of August, maybe the first part of September, okay, where we would be ready to step up into the plus features, and that's the $5.99 per month, okay? And what that does is fantastic. So you have to see the demo. I also have comment questions that I printed out that'll give you an idea with geo-fencing and, you know, obviously text messaging, and also there are going to be community partners that are gonna be ready for this. They, you know, they want to drive promotions with each other, they wanna do trails. In fact, Michigan, they drew 20,000 visitors since August with a trail passport, so you go to all these different breweries or, you know, whatever, take your pick, but they had that, and they had $160,000 that they, you know, it was a hard number that they could attribute to revenue that was, you know, impacted. So this is gonna open up all kinds of ideas for collaboration, for promotions, and the cool thing that's really, you know, I'm so excited about is that you can modify it practically in real time. So if it's not working, you know, you don't have to wait to find out when you're just sitting there twiddling your thumbs, you can adjust it almost on the fly. It also integrates with a company called Twilla, which does text messaging right from the website and right from the app. So again, you know, some people actually respond better to text messaging, obviously. You know, all around the world, people will read a text message within 15 minutes versus email, which is, doesn't get looked at. The setup would take about a month. That's why I'm saying we hook Visit Widget in in September. That gives us, you know, October, November, December, so those hard months, January, February, where, you know, things are very lean, we don't get a lot of people coming into town. Well, now, we can actually have a whole itinerary and drive them into different areas, and I'm just real excited about it. So that has to do with the website and really fixing it up and getting it to where it really is driving revenue. The other thing that I'm moving forward with is a pocket map, and I'll show that to you. You know, it's about two by two, and it folds out into different pieces, and people can put it, you know, in their, right here in their pocket, you can put it right here in your purse, as opposed to a tri-fold, which usually gets scrunched up. We're gonna have a digital as well as, you know, the printed version. You can see the costs here, very reasonable. I'm gonna use Midwest marketing for that. I also have right here resources that you can go to if you want to look at the other markets that are using this app. So there's probably at least 20 if you go to the Google Store or the iPhone Store, you know, and I highly recommend that you download it and get familiar with it and kind of see how to use it, and it'll answer a lot of your questions, you know, if you can't make the live demo on the 16th. So with that, does anybody have any questions or comments? No? Okay, sure.
I guess the, you know, one real question is, you know, the cost and stuff, and have we budgeted for it?
Right.
Two, you know, we just paid for a, I guess, major overhaul of our website, and I'm kind of wondering, did we not get any maintenance there, or have we just kind of put that?
No, that was not included in the total price, so that was an add-on to pay for afterwards. And there was such discomfort with the original developers that we didn't want a sign of maintenance agreement with them.
They were also not reasonable. I mean, really.
So we do have the need for at least seven maintenance on the website, there is no doubt. Depends on how large that the Tourism Tax Commission wants to go to allocate towards that, but we do need to get somebody on board to start maintaining it, 'cause there are things that I have no clue. Tanelin knows more about it than I, and still, there's things that are deep into it that we don't have the expertise for.
Right. To answer your question better, so we did have an audit tool, and so we know all the critical warnings and all the things. And so, for example, prior to really getting into deep discussions with Jim, Jim Rodney and his team, okay, you know, and I shared that with all of you via email, you know, here's kind of the analysis, right? What are we gonna tackle first? There are some plugins that are there, they're not even working, you know, do you wanna continue to host with GoDaddy? Other WP Engine is actually a more preferred hosting provider. I know I'm getting into the minutia of it, however, that's why I really like this team, because, you know, they're very well-respected, they work in WordPress, they have a whole methodology, they walk you through it all. These hours will take us way beyond, I think these hours will take us probably at least a year. That's why I'm asking for these hours, because not only that, I'll be getting trained. What does that mean? Well, that means that I'll be able to do the work, and, you know, they can go on to something maybe more sophisticated. This also includes a CMS, which we don't have right now, so all of our data would be stored, you know, in a content management system. That's very important if you're gonna do any kind of email marketing or whatever, you know, 'cause it's actually with your website as opposed to, you know, an email service provider that helps you with your analytics and your search and just different things like that. And so this also includes hours with Visit Widget, so I put that on here, as you noticed. So in their proposal, it could be anywhere from eight hours, and that's included in this maintenance and functionality agreement. So this is something, I know it's really hard, I know it's difficult for you to hear that you're spending this amount of money, but I would, I would, I would simply say that if you don't do it, if you don't fix it, you know, it's never going to really perform at the level that's needed.
Okay, well, there's the comment, I guess I was looking for when you said fix it and stuff, but, and I guess I'm gonna put you in the hot seat right here and now and stuff, so what we paid for originally was not a good deal.
No. But I wasn't involved in that.
I disagree to some extent, and that we have a functioning, a better functioning website than we have before. But we aren't paying maintenance, as we do with most online services, you have, you know, your upfront cost, but then you have a yearly maintenance fee that you have to pay to maintain it, and we don't have anybody set up for that.
Can you remind me what that cost was initially?
$20,000 with a $10,000 grant.
Right, and then there was an agreement for $900 a month for, with JAD, right?
Yeah.
Right. That was over and above, you know, the $20,000 to create the site. The site wasn't finished, guys. It wasn't done correctly, and it wasn't finished, and unfortunately, yeah.
So do we have a contract issue here we can pursue?
Oh, with them?
Yes.
No.
I don't believe so.
No, you can't clawback.
They delivered what we asked for.
I'd ask a legal opinion of that.
Well.
At a later time, okay.
You could win that, you could win that battle to the moose to bore, or whatever they say, you know, if you wanna spend time doing that, you know? But, you know, the good news is, you guys, is that, you know, like, I sat next to somebody at the Missouri Conference and Visitors Bureau, you know, and they just, I talked to all their references, you know, and they were vetted, okay, and they've been doing this. They are subject matter experts, and so we get the benefit of a team, small teams of people that really, really understand tourism. That's their sweet spot. So when I talk to them, I am learning about what other, you know, what other states are doing, and so it's not just, hey, I'm gonna go in there and technically support you, plus the fact that, you know, they're gonna train me. So that is a lot of value that you really can't calculate in this, you know? So I just feel very fortunate, and there was a gentleman over in Illinois, he runs 21 counties as, you know, the executive director, and we've been on the phone a lot, and, yeah, I mean, I've talked very candidly with people, and I've had good news. Could something go wrong? Always. But I'm, I'm not gonna let that happen.
You're not gonna hold against me that I'm a little skeptical?
Skeptical, you should be skeptical, because, you know.
Hey, we're on the same page there.
I welcome all your questions, and that is why, you guys, I am gonna reach out and share a lot of this information, especially to the community partners and everything. It is, they're tax dollars, if they're, they have to buy in on this, you know, they have to submit content and their pictures, and they have to step forward with, you know, their ideas with promotions. So for example, let's just say this weekend, if this was all turned on, right? Okay, what we could be doing is we could be inviting people, hey, you know, Mother's Day, go to the plant sale, pick up something for your mom, then go here and have brunch, and here, and so forth and so on. And so it's not just, it's for local people, and then, and then those who don't, like the one guy I met from California, and he doesn't know, he doesn't know where the wineries are, he doesn't know where Hall Park is, you know, they're just, if they don't know and you don't have any way to access it, then you'd probably just get in your car and leave, you know, 'cause like, I don't know what else to do around here. So this is, this is wonderful. I just hope you're able to see the live demo for an understanding, and also if you would, you know, download it, play around with it, and again, I'm very happy to take any questions. Yeah, I want everybody to be comfortable with this. Okay? Thank you.
Bob, did you have any other questions you wanted to ask?
Well, yeah, actually, I do.
Okay. Let me come back.
Please. You know, I know this is a subject you're sold on.
Yes.
What happens if you're not here?
You mean if I die?
I didn't, but again, in a specific, what happens?
Well, if that happens, then I don't know. No.
That's a big I don't know, and I don't like I don't knows.
No, 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 no. They can execute this, they can execute this without, you know.
But we have to have somebody here.
Well, that would be the same for your police chief, if he just decides to leave.
I mean, it's, that's, we run that in every department, I mean, that's a what-if that's...
Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, I don't disagree with you, Bob, but I mean, it's, are you wanting somebody else trained in the city along with her?
I'm just asking those questions. I don't want another what-if.
Well, I tell you, to answer that, if I could keep waving my wand, I would say yes. It would be great if I had somebody like, you know, an assistant, like a digital assistant or somebody that I could be training. You know, in my notes here, I am getting help, thank you. Happy, I am getting help from some of the young ladies gonna do some blocky tackling on things. But, you know, you're right. I mean, I am just one person, and, but, knock on wood, you know, I'm really healthy.
No, and this wasn't against you, you know, this was just, those questions, it's always to be proactive than reactive.
Well, I tell you what, if you guys, okay, if something happened to me, and I was just saying another person, and I knew this was going on, oh my gosh, I would be, yep, I wanna be part of that, I'll make sure that project happens.
Right.
Okay.
That's reassuring.
Okay.
Thank you, Tanelin.
You're welcome.
Move on to David Bova, Community Development Administrator.
Good evenings. You have my report there. Historic preservation wise, we have a meeting next Monday, on the 15th. The historic preservation grant is moving along. We received one bid, so we'll be working on the contract with that bidder, which was the same company that performed the preservation workshops that we had in 2021, so they worked out really well. Drop down to the building department, you'll see there was a special use permits that Planning and Zoning recommended for approval. They were accidentally placed on this agenda early on and taken off because the public hearing is scheduled for the 25th, so we'll hear those next meeting. No change, I just reported two weeks ago, so I'm just getting back on schedule, so no change in the comprehensive plan update. Planning and zoning, as I just mentioned, had a meeting last week, approved two special use permits that you will hear about next week, and then if you flip to the next page, there's just an update there on floodplain management, just trying to keep you abreast of what the weather service is predicting, and there's a 71% chance of minor flooding in May, June, July timeframe. That's really all I have, unless you have any questions?
I wanted to thank you very much for sending the emails to me that we were talking about, planning and zoning, all that information. Now that I can open my email, Happy, we did figure out how to do it, so we're all taking a move.
I didn't want to make sure you received one.
Oh, I think I've received everything. I'll get back to you, make sure I have any questions, but that was a lot of information.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll have homework to do.
Dave, I'll have just one, and I promise to be quick. Your 3/8 cent sales tax predicted amount of money, that is $600,000 shared between the city and county.
I don't know, that's, that would be the county's tax revenue, so that'll be up to them. That was just something that they presented, that it's a yes, $600,000. So I think that topic is being discussed currently at the county. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, David. No committee reports speak of? Okay. We will move on to public hearing. Board of Aldermen will hold a public hearing to consider an annexation petition filed to the city on April 27, 2023 by St. Genevieve R. Two School District.
So I laid the plat on the table next to you so you could see the parcel that we're discussing, though it is included in the packet that you received. We received an application from St. Genevieve R. Two School District on April 17. Filing fee received the same day. Notice sent to media on the 22nd and published in the paper May 3. Notice was also mailed to the applicant on April 22. This is a 1.81 acre piece of property. It is compact and contiguous to the city limits. Water and sewer are available. Zoning would be consistent upon annexation with the zoning that's already there. That's really all the information I have, unless you have questions?
Does anybody have any other comments on that to speak of? No? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. Move on to public comments.
Hello, my name is Gina Bennett. I live at 107 Bosler Drive. I sat close so I could be first. Thank you, Tanelin. I think that while it sounds scary, the amount of money, if the tourists come, they'll pay the taxes on everything that... the taxes on everything they eat, drink, stay, whatever, that'd be sweet. Because my car taxes are high because we have an excellent school district. Thank you very much. I think that it would be cool if we had roving ambassadors for tourism. I do it myself quite often, but I don't wear a cool costume. At Pioneer Days, they had a cool costume lady that made the costumes. It would be cool if we could find local seamstresses who could kind of sew costumes and if there's any persons interested of any age, sex, whatever, I don't care, they can contact me via Facebook Messenger. While Facebook is a blessing and a curse, we are stuck with it. So I wish that we could try to support tourism as best we can because it's the best way to get money in our coffers. That's all I got to say. And everybody else is doing good, love you. Steve, G, London. So, thanks.
Thank you, Gina. Any other public comments? Move on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Takes us to old business. Bill number 4555, an ordinance authorizing the city treasurer to write off uncollectibles from the water wastewater accounts of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri. This is a second reading.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Do a roll call.
Alderwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Ideman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, zero no votes and one absent. Bill number 4555 now becomes ordinance number 4478.
Okay. I didn't hear a voice vote, so I'm going to have to make sure we pause so we give them a chance to respond. Okay. Move on to next item on old business, that would be bill number 4556, which is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a deed dedicating a portion of Division Street to the, to the city of St. Genevieve. This is a second reading.
Can you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Ideman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
We have seven.
Alderman Bennett?
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
We have eight yes votes and zero no. Our, or bill number 4556 now becomes ordinance number 3479.
Okay, thank you. Move us into new business. First item would be approval of the annual liquor license renewals. Motion to approve? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to approval of the low bid by Bales Concrete LLC in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars for the city concrete sidewalk replacement project.
Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Takes us down to, what's that?
That was a first and second reading?
No, that was.
That was bouncing down the board.
Got to move on to bill number 4558, which is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bales Concrete of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the city concrete sidewalk replacement project in an amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading, bill number 4558, which is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bales Concrete of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the city concrete sidewalk replacement project in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Can we do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Abstained, he's a customer of mine.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Ideman?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, one abstained. Bill number 4558 now becomes ordinance number 4480.
Take us down to bill number 4559, which is an ordinance providing for the annexation of certain real estate owned by St. Genevieve R2 School District into the city of St. Genevieve existing corporate limits. This is a first reading.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
Just a quick question on it and stuff. You're having annexing one portion of the property.
The other portions of the property are already in the city limits.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Good question. You have a, you have a first and a second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a sec, oops, sorry. Anybody opposed, I'm so sorry, Mayor. Motion for a second reading?
I believe we can do that.
Oh, no? Okay.
I think we're.
I made the motion, I'll throw it out there.
You're okay with a second?
I'm opposed to a second reading.
So I have a motion for a second reading and I have a second for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
He said, I, I think I have three, three notes. Okay, so the motion will carry for a second reading. Second reading of bill number 4559, an ordinance providing for the annexation of certain real estate owned by St. Genevieve R2 School District into the city of St. Genevieve existing corporate limits.
Move to table the reading till next meeting.
I'll sign that.
Okay, I have a motion to table that.
Discussion.
In a second. Yeah.
I'm just opposed to a second reading on, on annexing property in the city limits. I'm not big on any second readings on the same day, same readings. So something like this, I don't think we're in a huge time crunch. No one came to us and told us prior to the meeting that we're in a huge time crunch, so I'm just, I'm okay with having them wait two more weeks. I'm not, I'm, I'm going to vote for it, I just think we need to have a chance to have a little bit more input from citizens.
I'll second the motion to table on the other ground.
I think there's already a second.
Then I'll third it.
Okay, so the motion right now is to table the second reading of this ordinance to a later meeting. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We should have as tabled the matter.
The decision.
You already had a second reading and then you moved to table it. So the motion is really to table the second reading that are required, it's just to table the matter to the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
So then it's going to be on the agenda just for either of the board.
Okay. Any other business to discuss? Then we will go ahead and adjourn the regular meeting at this time.
Can't argue that.
Yeah. Look to, look for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then it's approved, we'll move on to business item number one, which is a follow-up to the stormwater study.
Hank Van Leef, the conference here to update you on that, the last, last meeting that we had, there were some questions and he had a chance to push through that and bring that back to the board. I included the old slide deck information that we had from the previous meeting, this will be a little bit beyond that information, the extra, extra that was asked. Dave, it's all you.
Thank you. I know there's some new officials, so I'll just do a quick, quick recap of some of the discussion from the past meeting. So Cochran was, Cochran was engaged by the city to do a stormwater study and there were five drainage basins that were selected for that study. Few meetings back, we discussed drainage areas one through three and that's still the, still the primary focus of, of discussion. But those drainage areas being the area along what I will call West Market Street and the several drainage structures that cross Market Street and then the drainage way on down to Gabary Creek. We also did an evaluation on the culvert under Highway 32 at the bank of Bloomsdale and the third area looked at was international subdivision. So we discussed drainage improvements for those, for those areas, presented preliminary recommendations and preliminary cost estimates. There were a, a handful of questions that we told the board we would provide follow-up information on, so that was why I was here tonight. So I'll try to cover those items. If there's anything, any additional questions or anything I missed, hopefully we can just continue that discussion. So starting off with drainage area one, the, the board's direction, drainage area one is, is Market Street. The board's direction was the preference of a, of a dry basin as opposed to a wet basin, so we were going to continue to explore construction of a detention basin that would reduce flows in that drainage basin and then alleviate flooding and, and backups associated with several of the drainage structures there. An additional question that came up during that and I, if I remember right, I think it was Alderman Donovan, was the question of there's a, there's a culvert that the city uses to cross the tributary and then drive under the railroad tracks to mow up a piece of property. I was able to meet with a couple of property owners that live in the area and that's, that's always great to be able to talk to somebody who's actually witnessed what's going on when it's raining. We can sit in the office and run calculations all day long, but somebody's actually seen what's happening out there is, is priceless. And from what they're describing, it does seem like that is probably contributing to some of the backups we're seeing. Now that would be, that'd be improved with the, with the retention basin, but this feels like one of those situations to me where we, you know, there's a problem there and we do everything we can to alleviate the issue and I do think that, that creek crossing there is one of the issues. So I, I do intend to work with Steve and staff here to try to come up with a, an alternate way to access that property or a way to improve that crossing that reduces the, the backups that are seen there. Another question that came up was just additional work in international subdivision and just the consideration of doing full curb and gutter and storm sewer throughout, throughout the subdivision. There's approximately 1.5 miles of road within that neighborhood and to, to curb and gutter all of the streets within, within the subdivision, that once you put in curb and gutter, you're also committing to putting in storm sewer. That, that project very quickly is going to get up to a million dollar project. So my, my first reaction to that was that probably will deter some attention away from that project, but if, if not, we just need that direction to continue kind of to pursue that and to, to develop that further as a project. Those were the, those are the real items I had on my list that were, were to be followed up on. I do, and if there's additional questions tonight, I'm certainly here to answer them. I do, so we, we also owe you a presentation on what would be drainage areas four and five. And I, I intend to get with Happy, if, if the board thinks it's appropriate and works for Happy, I would suggest we'll be back sometime in June to do that, to kind of give a final presentation there and then there can be any additional questions answered then also. But I guess, I guess at this time I may just ask, is there any additional questions regarding the, the first three drainage areas that have been, been discussed?
Dave, I'm going to go with drainage area one since that is in my ward and stuff. I guess I'm, a pretty overwhelming opinion, I think you touched on it earlier, I don't think anybody downstream wants a lake above them in higher elevation and stuff and I think that's a easy thing. One of the concerns I have when looking at your overall map that kind of outlines the, the high point in that whole area is the amount of agricultural ground that surrounds that basin that we've talked about there and one worried about that basin silting in, you know, as they, you know, farm that ground around there and stuff, because I don't think... Was there any thought put into that and stuff? I mean, because if this thing silts in, it's going to lose efficiency and lose capacity and stuff.
Yeah.
I know, looking at some other detention basins around and there's pretty big grassy areas around them to basically stop some of that or some type of man-made things to do that. I mean, have you thought about that and what additional area that would have to cover to?
Not in, not in great detail. It's certainly, it's certainly something we need to think of and plan for. I think the idea of a vegetative buffer around, around the detention basin would, would certainly, would certainly help with that. Just, you know, an area of, of grass that would, you know, as the, as the runoff drains through that, some of the.
So you agree that, that is a very important aspect of designing a basin there and stuff?
Yeah.
I was a little concerned that it wasn't in the initial, you know, phase here and stuff. I mean, I appreciate you've talked to the people on down, you know, where the two creeks come together and stuff and that little, whatever it is there and stuff.
Yeah.
Is definitely an issue and stuff, but.
The, you know, the one thing I would, I would point out and totally understand the, the thought process that the people don't want a lake up there, I understand that. But I, I also do want to point out that a, a dry detention basin is going to be more of a maintenance item for the city than, I believe in what a lake would be. You know, this is something that you're going to want to be mowing, whether that's brush hogging or we get this to a point where it's, it's mowed with lawn mowers. You know, this is a, this is a, a piece of property that's going to need to be maintained by the city. So that is just something I want to point out and, and maintenance on, on detention basins, at times can be challenging. It's a, it's an area where we're intentionally draining water too, so it's, it's commonly wet and then obviously that can create issues for, for trying to mow. But it, it's certainly dealt with in, in other areas and it's just, it's just something that the city will have to diligently pay attention to. We also point that out because I think we've all seen retention basins that haven't been maintained and there's sycamore trees growing up in them and the outlet structures got trees growing out of it, so that's, that's just a, just a point to make sure that the, the board understands that this will be a, this will be another item for your, for your grass mowers to be taken care of.
So, you know, when you design a detention basin like that, I mean, do these basins drain out a hundred percent over time or?
Yeah.
So it isn't going to dry up in there several times a year and stuff?
So, I mean, generally after a large rain within, I mean, without having the design completed, but certainly within a week, it would be, it would be drained out.
Right.
Probably, probably more like a couple of days.
Right. So if a lake's there and stuff, you're just covering it up with water, but still the silting in would definitely affect the lake over time. Yeah, well, but the lake's not a, not even a. Yeah, well, but the lake's not even a consideration and stuff, I don't think, but...
I agree 100%, the agricultural ground around it and the associated runoff, it needs to be dealt with.
Right.
You have a buffer built in there now, the way it looks like, correct? There's some vegetation and trees and whatnot above in higher elevation now?
Yeah, there would be.
If that pond is roughly three acres, that your, the retention area is three acres, it looks like there's, I don't know, acre to two acres of vegetation above it? Do you think that's right or not?
There's some brush above it.
Yeah.
And a ditch.
Yeah.
You know, but there's still water from either side here, you know, as you look at the basin, kind of to the right-hand side and the left-hand side, that's still going to drain into that area because it is the lowest area.
Agreed.
And walking up there.
Yeah, so to me, this all just continues in the discussion of as the city pursues this project, and you pursue the construction of this, is the city buying property? How is this being accomplished, is it somehow leased, or is it an easement? And then just making sure that we secure enough property to accomplish the improvements that you're talking about to deal with the sediment.
I think you told us somewhere in the $130,000 or $140,000 range, but that didn't include any design fees?
$138,000, that did include design fees.
Oh, it did, okay. And in designing a basin like that, I mean, the slopes inside there would not be super steep, but they could be mowed?
Right, we would target a maximum slope of three to one.
Right.
So, for every three feet horizontal, you would fall one foot vertical. That's typically, for an experienced grass mower, that's usually acceptable.
I watched this during, via YouTube, I think, when you guys did the storm session, so I wasn't on the board at the time, but I was asking Alderman Jeff, was that during a work session, or was that during a regular meeting?
Work session.
Was it a work session?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and I've talked to a few people that would be interested in having it as a wet basin or, you know, a lake. So, I was questioning, like, are we set on doing it as a dry basin? Because recreational purposes and using it as recreational ground, and we have a lot of people that are interested in that, so that was my question. Are we set on doing it as a dry basin, or?
I haven't talked to anybody, especially downstream, that is in favor of that because of, and then two, you know, we don't own this property, this is something that is owned by Mississippi Lime, and I guess the general consensus was, you know, then we'd have to have a road access up there and...
We're going to have to have that anyway, right, to get to mow it?
Well, they'd have to be at least an easement up to there, I'm guessing and stuff, but that was all kind of preliminary talk that, and like I said, basically based on the people downstream that didn't want it. And I think they've designed some like that, that have been in different areas where they did provide a good water area or recreational area and stuff, but just not sure that this area, but it's up for discussion.
Yeah. I would like to have more discussion on it, because I think it could be beneficial to the city as a whole. I understand not wanting to be downstream from it, but it's already coming downstream at a 100-year event or a 500-year event anyway.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's two types of levees, right? The ones that haven't broken, the ones that will break? I mean, you always hear that, you know, that joke about levees or dams or whatnot, so...
Right.
But I kind of trust our engineers that are going to build it, you know, the spec, and that we don't have to worry about a dam breaking for something like that. So, I don't know, what outweighs the other? Somebody's concern about the possibility of the basin breaking, or the potential use for the whole city to be able to use that?
Sure.
Well, yeah, might be more stress on it as a dry basin than when it hits a 500-year, because you're only building this for a 100-year event?
Yes, it would be able to detain the 100-year storm.
What happens when you have a bigger event than the 100? It's got the overflows that would...
Yeah, they'll have an overflow, and, you know, there'll be some type of an outlet structure, and then the typical design for any lake is the dam has a low spot in it, and it would be designed to an emergency spillway. A dry basin would have that also. That would be the same situation for a dry basin, exactly what you said, there's going to be a storm that potentially could exceed the capacity of the basin, and it will just need to pass through undetained.
I don't want to waste money on design for both, but, I mean, so I don't know what we do for next steps?
Right now, we're just in the preliminary stage. We haven't even gotten through areas four, five, and then we have Smith &amp; Company doing area six. So, I would say that this is good discussion, keep that step in mind, but we still need for them to finish their part of this whole project.
What's number six?
And then come back.
Sorry. Which one, six?
Six is the Progress Parkway property and the Sinkel on the south side of Oakwood.
So, if you both represent two different groups of people with two different schools of thought, how do you come to consensus and honor a timeline and keep things moving forward? Is that something that two aldermen can work aside from this table?
I think you can have public hearings.
I didn't look at the map and stuff, but is drainage area one exclusively in Ward one?
I would say yes. Yes. It does bump into Ward three because you share the creek.
I'd agree with public hearing. I just, to me, it sounded like we're one step before a public hearing. Do we need a public hearing? Sounds like maybe yes, but...
I wouldn't say you want that with any of your improvements.
Sure.
That you're talking about in all these areas. Except for maybe all of us agreeing, or all of the board agreeing, you need to put some pipes in on Highway 32 on center to alleviate that backup. I mean, that seemed to be one that everybody was agreed, had agreed on.
But that's the state that has to do that, correct?
Yeah.
We did have follow-up conversations with the state regarding that project. I believe they currently have a project scheduled for 2026 that is kind of loosely scoped out and loosely budgeted. That's kind of the impression we're getting from MoDOT. So, it's on their list, hasn't been a whole lot of work done on it yet. 2026 is the date they're looking at.
They're probably not typically right on time, maybe?
Those are the square.
I've held kind of loosely in the discussion, so those are descriptors that are important to me.
So, if you all are good with these questions that were answered from the first meeting, we can get Dave back in June to go over the other two areas, and then there's your next steps.
And that's something, Dave, that we talked about at the first meeting and stuff, that you would provide services in dealing with MoDOT, providing the study, or whatever you've done and stuff to help us push that along the way.
I would think as powerful as anything is if we could get pictures to MoDOT of when there's stormwater problems at that location. I think that would be as powerful a thing as we could do to make sure MoDOT sees what actually happens there as a result of their culvert under the highway.
Someone's probably got those now.
I would bet $100,000 that Shoe &amp; Sons owners there have pictures of that building flooding, so...
The other thing is, and I don't, I don't know if this has happened or not, or if it will happen, but if the water went over the highway at that location, that would be great to show them also.
But it always backs up towards Shoe.
He gets to the buildings before it gets to the highways, the problem.
It bottom next, and then goes back up, and then they're in a low area. Any other questions for Dave?
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, second item on the agenda tonight is, we had contracted with the IDC, who contracted with Smith &amp; Company, to, we actually contracted with Smith &amp; Company, to do a survey of the Progress Parkway property, and that is what they're bringing to the board tonight to take a look at.
We do have handouts, but hello. My name is Tom Kime, I'm the president of IDC. We do have several members of the IDC present with us this evening as well, from the board, Bob Palmer is here, Jason Bloom, and Gary Nelson. We also have Randy Razika, county commissioner, who's been working a lot with the IDC on this project, as well as Dina from the chamber, and Sandra Cabot from the state, who's helped us with looking at grants and helping us resource things for this project. Before we get into the survey, and I do have handouts for you, so you can look at it, I know, sent it to Happy, so you have an electronic copy of everything that we have. Some of the pages are like 36 pages in depth. You know, I think the good thing about the surveys, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit, is that one of the things we wanted to make sure of is that the land was going to be good to dig basements, and was something that you could build a home on and have walkout basements, and that, and the geotechnical, there's more than enough footage underground to do basements. But for the benefit of some of the new aldermen and the mayor, if you'll bear with me for just a little bit, I know some of you have heard some of these numbers that the IDC has worked on over the years, and just as a quick refresh of the IDC, you know, we exist to promote development, retention of business, industry, economic growth, and to foster continuing improving quality of life for St. Genevieve County. The IDC has been in operation since 1958. We provide revolving loans to businesses, to potential contractors. You've probably seen some of our work in the community with DNS Windows, Eric Scott, Hankstrom, the solar site out on 55. We even helped the city to put in LED lights, we fronted all the money for that project. We've done the engineering study, fronted all the money for the engineering study for the Progress Parkway. We partnered with the chamber to do two very important surveys in the community that gave us, I guess you will, the background and the information to go forward, and talked with developers and other people that potentially would build on this property. We met with, on a business retention piece with the companies in St. Genevieve, to find out what their needs were, to find out where their employees lived. We also met with realtors, bankers, builders, to really come up with, well, what is the need, where's the sweet spot for building homes in our community? We also commissioned, and this is a study that I really want to touch on, with CMO Regional Planning, Jew Christian has done a lot of work for the city, I think he's done multiple studies. I know the 17 years that I've been in St. Genevieve, and probably 16 of those, either on the chamber and certainly on the IDC, this city has always talked about economic development, bringing in business, bringing in homes to grow our city. I was talking with Gary Nelson just today, and he told me, and back in 1969, St. Genevieve had 4,400 people. Well, guess what St. Genevieve has in 2023? 4,400 people. The city is not growing. In fact, 42.5% of people working in the county live outside the county, and 75% of the people working in the city live outside the city. I can tell you that the vacancy rate for homes, and you probably know it, people can't find homes, it's less than 5%, or it's 5.5%, sorry. Bloomsdale, it's 1.4%. We're forcing people to live outside of municipalities that can help generate tax dollars for tourism, for all the retail, to grow our community. Perryville's vacancy rate is 11%, Fredericktown is 11%, Deloze is 15%, St. Genevieve again at 5.5%. Building permits, and again, our study was done in 2020, so we've reached out to CMO Regional Planning to have them update these numbers, but building permits in St. Genevieve in 2018, two. Building permits in 2019, eight. Building permits in 2020, four. 14 over three years. Bloomsdale had 10 over that period. Perryville, 25 in 18, 31 in 19, 44 in 2020. Do you see a trend? 100 building permits. And you talk about retirements? I'm retired, I'm not leaving my home, I don't live in the city yet, but who knows? It might be annexed in. But we went to the employers, and they're having large numbers of retirements, and there's no place for these people to live. Employers need this, and the reason being is that if you, in today's economy, with gas prices and the cost of everything, if you're commuting five minutes to work versus 50 minutes to work, our employers stand to lose those employees just because it's better quality of life for them. So, we can't rely on tapping into Jefferson County, St. Francis County, Perry County, even Cape County, where we're seeing our businesses get that. The data that we shared with you, and I have the handout so you can look at the numbers, but the data that I've shared with you is what we've been sitting down with developers to prove the case that we do have a pent-up demand for homes in St. Genevieve. We offered a builder, we said we will cover the cost of your carrying cost if you will do spec homes. There was some, I guess, the last remaining lots at Valley Springs, and guess what? Before even the shovel went into the ground, those homes were sold, and they're building homes, completing the operation out at the Valley Springs. So, the last time I met with the council, we offered to have Gilmore &amp; Bell come before the council, just to kind of educate the city and the council on the TIPS. Gilmore &amp; Bell is the one company that, they tell me that they do all the Chapter 100, virtually all the Chapter 100s, all the bond issuances, all the tip agreements in the state of Missouri for counties and municipalities. You know, we've been in regular meetings with the city, with the county, really to take you through what the impact is. And the economic impact, and this is one of the handouts that I'm going to share with you, and... So, these are the numbers from CMO Regional Planning. Again, they're a couple of years old, but I want to point out to you, this is a six-year projection of what the city would bring in for property taxes and sales taxes. Now, again, a lot has changed over the last two to three years in terms of building prices, cost of homes, where we, once we're talking about a home where the price tag was, for this project, was 256,818, and that's what CMO used. In meeting with developers, we're now looking at homes that are cost upwards of 300,325, and you can see that that's 17% increase in the value of a home, and if it's a $325,000 home we're talking about, it's 26, that's a 26% increase. So, you can just take that annual sales tax line for the city of St. Genevieve, and for the six years, just the six years, that is a total of $765,199 with the old money. thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars with the old money. If you were to take current day and put a sixteen percent or seventeen percent increase, that's one point, almost one point two million dollars the city would generate in sales tax. If you were to look at a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home, it would bring in one point two million. And then on top of it, you can then look at, well, what is the revenue from property tax? And you can see, under the old plan of two thousand twenty, it would generate, on the two hundred and fifty-six thousand eight eighteen base price for a home, would generate property taxes for the city of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight twenty-two. But if you add the increases on the value of the home, now you're looking at the city generating four hundred and thirty-two thousand in property taxes at the three hundred thousand dollar home level, and at the three hundred and twenty-five thousand level, it would generate four hundred and sixty-five thousand nine ninety-six. And these are based upon the numbers that CMO put together for us. Now granted, it's not going to start in year one because this is going to be done in phases, but you can see what it would pay once those homes get occupied and what they're going to generate. And if you really kind of think about it, dollars of income that are spent in our city, if somebody lives here, they talk about, and this was done on a one point five percent turnover of dollars. That means if you're living here and you spend a dollar at County Do-It, and then they turn around and spend it at Ace Hardware, that's changed hands two times. And in most cases, and Sandra looked this up for me today, money changes hands a minimum of two to four times every income dollar. And if those income dollars was being spent in Perryville and being spent everywhere else, you can see that these numbers are very low and very conservative in terms of what the city could expect in sales taxes. So. Got my papers mixed up. That's what happens when you get retired. But, you know, as you know, the IDC has been working with the city, and we're prepared to take a leadership role in this. As you can tell, we were very instrumental in pushing the city and the Catholic Church to swap land because the property we're talking about here is borders up to infrastructure that can easily be expanded as we build houses. It's ideal for development because you're sitting on a beautiful community center, water park, nursing home, now a custard stand, easy access from the city to get out to those places instead of using Progress Parkway all the way around or going out thirty-two. And, you know, last year, I guess it was in late July, August, we had a developer that was ready to go, and I know at that time the city wasn't ready, I mean, this was all coming fast and furious. I can tell you, we don't have that developer, but we have been talking with others. One of the things that we asked Smith and Company to do is put a dollar amount on what it would cost to develop this property. And, I mean, I've heard the stormwater, that one project is two million. It is, it's expensive. To do just Bosser Drive, to take Bosser Drive and connect it from the Baptist Church to Progress Parkway, if we did it in asphalt, it would be one point two million roughly. If you did it in concrete, it would be one point three three million roughly, and then, you know, these are estimates from Smith and Company. The entire project, which is roads, sidewalks, sewer, fire hydrants, the whole shebang, if the roadway was asphalt, would be four point seven million, and if you did it in concrete, it's five million. So you can see that just to develop that piece of property, it's going to take somebody to come in here and do major work to bring the roads in and to make it happen. And if we're looking at, and just for the sake of argument, this proposal, I think in one plan is like a hundred and fifteen homes, but let's just use hundred, a hundred homes. So if you, quick math, if you divide four point seven million by a hundred homes, you have a development cost of four, forty-seven thousand per home. Per home, forty-seven thousand per home. If you do concrete, it's fifty thousand per home, and that's before they even build the home. That's before they even buy the land. So if we're talking about a sweet spot of homes in St. Genevieve to be, at that time it was two fifty to three twenty-five, now just start at three twenty-five and go up from there. So you take a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you tack on fifty thousand for the development cost, and you tack on another X thousand for the land. You can see what we really were hoping to do was provide lower-cost housing, affordable housing, but there's ways to get around it. And the IDC has some thoughts, and we have some things to bring before the council. I don't know if you want this in open session, or do you want to go into the survey? I'll leave it at you because we will be talking about the land specifically.
Yeah, I think if we talk land specifically, then we want to go into closed session. If you want to go through the subdivision first before we close the meeting.
Sure.
But it's up to the board on what they want to do. Everything can be open session. It doesn't have to be.
I don't mind what this is, whatever you.
Why don't we go to the plan first?
Thank you for the belch. Happy heads it up on the screen. So I think it might be better for me just to kind of clear, just to. And again, all the engineering cities will come to the council, and Happy, I think, already has him in a iconic form. I think I escorted him to the manager. But this is Bosser Road right here that would come through. This is obviously Progress Parkway, and this would go to the Valley Baseball Diamond to kind of set it in motion for you and how that all lays out. We have been talking with a developer that is looking at doing a piece of this, which would include probably three lots here, all of these lots, the lots through here, the lots coming down probably to right here, and it would stop. He's said that he is interested in developing that piece, and again, it doesn't bring the road through, which is, we think, needs to happen to really spur growth out there. But in the interim, it could be a Plan B, which is to get something moving out on Progress Parkway to bring.
First phase.
Would be a first phase. In fact, you know, all the developers we've talked to know that they're not going to do this in one year. It's going to be probably four or five phases. And one of the interesting things that he talked about is, in this layout, he was looking at thirty-four housing units, and that would be made up of single-family homes on there, but these lots here would be duplex-type homes. In other words, he would use that to really go after a particular market. Retirement homes, duplexes, garden homes, smaller versions of homes are very hot. In fact, even today, I was talking with another member of the IDC who had a conversation with the developer, and he said, even with today's economy and with building prices up and interest rates, shoot, I remember my first home, we had an ARM, and it was twelve percent, and it would be eighteen percent if we didn't refinance it or the rates didn't go down. So, you know, the rates now are, they're not two and a half percent, but, you know, they're reasonable. But he said they're building these things like crazy in Farmington and other communities. So part of this project, even, let me scroll up. Part of this project, when we talked with developers, was to have them look at putting garden-type homes to have smaller lots, and, you know, for those of us that want to downsize and, you know, not have a big three or four-bedroom home with a big lot, they could have a smaller garden home, if you will, less maintenance, and then it frees up a home in town, frees up other spaces for people to step into. But the other part, too, was to have affordable housing and a mixture of these garden homes to maximize use of the property. Because there is some sinkholes. There's a big sinkhole, if you go up to the top. There's a really big sinkhole right here, and there's six Mississippi Lime vents. And in discussions with Mississippi Lime, four of them can be closed off. The one that's on the west side of the property, and I don't know, it's right along the, kind of the edge of the property, really won't interfere with anything, and that can remain. And the other one is down on the very bottom that they felt would need to stay. But anything in the main part of the property, from what we've been told, could probably be taken care of. And I know out where I live, we're fortunate enough that they're blasting right underneath us, and actually, they're moving towards Valley Springs, so that's good riddance. But the vents that they put in, they now can put in these mufflers that won't impede somebody's enjoyment of life in their own backyard. So we've kind of done the work there. So the layouts you have in your, the engineering study, what we asked them to do, and again, it was done with, just to see how a subdivision might lay out. They have utilities, how the utilities would run through that piece. The nice thing about developing this first part up here, which makes a lot of sense, is it borders up to infrastructure that's very close. So they're not bringing water, sewer, a lot of excavation, although they'll probably move some dirt down, but from what we've been told, this first part taps into a lot of existing potential infrastructure that's there. The geotechnical, like I said, and I have a copy for you, and I think I sent it to you. It's thirty-six pages. I didn't print it out for everybody. But the geotechnical, like I said, one of the things we are most concerned with, and the first developer we talked with was, well, what's underneath the dirt? How far down does it go? And like I said, I think the shallowest part is nine and a half, ten feet, something like that, but I think a lot of it is well over twelve, thirteen, fifteen feet, I think he said, in some places, but it all came back really good. So this layout, you know, a developer that would come in, obviously, they're going to put their stamp on it. I don't know if they're going to come to the council and ask for you to look at, like, your setbacks or, what's the term, in-between houses, how much space.
Side setbacks? Those are setbacks.
Those are setbacks, too. Okay, so.
Front set, side to back, yeah.
And what size of frontage, or, I know they were talking about some of the cities have certain requirements of frontage. That may be something that, you know, you may have to look at. I guess it's going to come down to, you know, how much and how far is the council willing to talk about some incentives, and we've got some ideas that at some point we would like to talk more about, but.
Any questions about the plan?
And if you'd like Smith and Company to come, and once you've looked it over, if you would like, I think Happy, you were at the initial meeting with Smith and Company, we certainly would make them available to come and meet with the council and answer any other questions on specifics that they ran into, the development costs that they put on the project. The initial number we got from CMO was a lot lower, but again, that was three years ago, and we asked them to give us something more current, and that's, oh, it's, it's an eye-opener, so.
And this is a preliminary, not even really a preliminary, this is a sketch plan.
Yeah.
So we haven't even gotten into the point yet of sending it to planning and zoning and then bringing it to the board as an adopted subdivision. But this is the important part to start with. It's showing on this ninety-nine lots. This is what they were able to squeeze in. And you've got a lot of, what would be common area along Progress Parkway, and then the creek that runs back to the sinkhole on the west side, east side, and then a little bit of common area up here, and then another sinkhole up here. So there's no detention basins, there's nothing drawn on here with storm sewer. That would come later with a full-blown drawing, which we weren't asking for. We just wanted to look at this.
Tom, there's two numbers that you gave us, this four point seven and this five million dollar. I mean, is that total development cost, or is that just?
That's total streets.
Everything.
Everything, sidewalks, curb, that are all that.
Sure.
And I think, you know, one of the things that we've talked about in IDC meetings and local county is that, you know, we've been looking at grants to try to determine if there's money out there. I talked with Jeremy down at CMO Regional Planning. The one problem St. Genevieve has is that our income, and I gave you the sheet on the income, household income, our income in the county and in the city is just higher than, unfortunately, the counties and municipalities we're competing against. He hasn't closed the book on that. I mean, Delta Regional Planning is there to help us, and they've been very helpful. Sandra's been instrumental in opening some doors for us, you know, to really see what's out there. I know, working with Randy and Gary, when Gary's at the, on the county commissioners, I mean, the county was all in and supportive of this to try to help us get grants. So we're not going to stop. You know, the reality is, anything that, any dollars that can be put to this project is just going to make it more affordable in the long run in terms of getting housing done, and it's going to take some dollars.
You know, Tom, in looking at that, you know, you said there was like ninety-nine lots on here, and of course, you know, you do the simple math, and we've got a forty-seven thousand dollar cost of lot, or a fifty thousand dollar cost of lot. You know, traditionally in this area, that is on the upper end of the scale for what this market might bear. Of course, even though, as you said earlier, the housing market and the whole economy has changed drastically and is still evolving as we speak, but, you know, not throwing any cost of the property in and any unforeseen, and of course, as a developer, they're not going to do this for nothing, you know. And taking that into consideration with the size of these lots, I know there's a lot of them around a third of an acre, a lot of them a little smaller. of them around a third of an acre, a lot of them a little smaller than that. And of course, you know, this is still a preliminary plan, but the one thing I can see is maybe a demand for some larger lots, you know, to have a diverse subdivision where in some areas we have more affordable, in some areas we have just a more diverse thing to accommodate anybody who wants to build there and stuff.
Exactly.
Which could reduce some of those lots, but, one, I mean, I very much appreciate what the IDC has done here to bring it this forward. I mean, this is incredible what you've done and you guys need to be committed for this. This is a positive and here we sit as a city just being handed to us. So, thank you for all the work the IDC's done in the county.
I think the IDC shares, what I know the city shares is that, you know, the only way to grow the city is to get, we've got to get this accomplished, we've got to get people living here. We've got, we've got solid businesses in our community that are begging for help and they get people to come here and they can't find a home. And I could, I could give you a list of companies that you probably know and the biggest one recently is Buckeye. Their management team, five of their management team wanted to live in St. Genevieve to move their, move up from Scott City. And all five of those people now live in Perryville because they have no, there was no home in St. Genevieve for them to, to put themselves in. And those stories are over and over and over again. I can tell you from the hospital, we have doctors, we have management people, we have just regular staff that have to live somewhere else. I mean, if you go down 32, Yuri and I were talking about today, go down 30, go sit out there by the golf course, which is a great place to be, and watch the cars go by at night. I mean, there's just a constant stream of people that leave our, you know, leave our community because they live somewhere else and they spend their dollars there. So, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I guess the point that I do want to make is that I think the city at some point is going to have to look at, what are you prepared to put into this project? What are you prepared to say, we're going to need to spend some money and hopefully, you know, the return is what's going to continue to grow the city and bring people here and impact everybody's business, keeps people here. You know, you get 200 and, I think the number they gave us was 250 additional people in the subdivision would be living here. I mean, that's 258 people spending money in our stores, our restaurants. You look at the taxing entities that stand to gain from this, I mean, the city is just a small part of this, part of this whole thing. And, you know, the other thing to really look at is the fact that, and I think it bears to be said, is this land that the city has was purchased with TIF funds. It was purchased with funds that were generated by the taxing entities, the school district, the hospital, the ambulance, the library. The city had their share, but it's a small part of this. That that land was, the TIF came to the city for development. And it wasn't like the city bought that property with their own money, they bought it with TIF funds. They bought it with the tax money from all the other taxing entities. I mean, that's the bottom line here, is that when the original TIF was done, it was done to promote economic development. It wasn't for the city to have a windfall of profit on the sale of the land. It was, it was, the entities came together and said, develop this property, use our tax dollars to provide the incentives for development, not to say, here's our tax dollars, let the city get a windfall profit. And I think that's an important piece for everyone to understand because, you know, if the city goes out and spends money, people are going to ask, well, what are you doing in Meyer? You're building a new development. But when you bring 258 people in and you bring the tax dollars that you bring in, it's going to generate additional dollars for you to continue to improve infrastructure, to improve what's happening in our community. And again, IDC has a couple thoughts and I'll keep going unless-
I'd like to make a motion to have a closed work session and discuss these topics of land.
I will second that motion.
Before we take a vote, Alderman Bennett, you're going to have to turn your camera on for you to be involved in the closed session and for the vote, if you wouldn't mind.
Here we have a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Are you sure?
Happy, I've been here, you do I need to get out of here?
No, if, we just need to see you visually for the closed session. Our attorney said you would need to be visual for the, for the vote.
We need to see your handsome face, so.
I don't think he heard me.
Alderman Bennett, we'd like to see you, sir.
I'm working on it.
Oh, okay. There he is. Look at that handsome double. Okay, so, okay, so I have a motion from Gary, from Alderman Smith, excuse me, to go into closed session, I have a second from Alderman Donovan. We'll need to do a roll call.
Alderman Claymore?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
And we have eight guest votes.
Okay. We're going to move into closed session now, we'll take a short break real quick in case anybody needs to-
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
-there's a restroom or- We are moving back into open session now, we're going to move on to item number three of the work session agenda, which is the discussion regarding the current 15% late fee on any water sewer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I guess, with your permission, I'll just pick up on this because it was kind of, I got the ball rolling and I appreciate you putting it on the agenda, thank you very much. I just thought it was a bit steep and I did some research and, for example, I touched base with Systems Electric and it was 1.5% of the total bill. I talked to some of my peers here tonight and I think what we've come up with, and correct me if I'm wrong, we feel 5% would be a more, what's the word I'm looking for? I think 5% would be better.
More successive?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I would like to just put that out there, 5% for late fee.
I move that we change the late fee from 15% to 5%.
I'll make a second.
We'll just bring it back as an ordinance, so it has to be adopted.
Oh, yeah, we're in a work session.
Yeah. That is a, I mean, I think that's more in line, I mean, obviously we see the proof's in the pudding here. I mean, we can see exactly what other municipalities are charging for this. It seems like we probably ought to get more in line with our peers. So, I think it was a good topic of discussion, Alderman Smith, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you.
So, I guess there's really no formal, I mean, I think we're-
Bring it back as an-
We'll bring it back as an ordinance and we'll vote on it and see what goes. But I think that's a good, a good thought.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything on that? Pretty breezy. Okay, wonderful. We will move to work session item number four, which is a follow-up to the salary study that was discussed at the previous meeting. So, I think we're, we're moving to potentially survey other, basically go back and have them potentially survey for that additional data that we were, that was our next step or what it may be.
That was a discussion, a question, and I, again, talk to CBIZ and they can do that type of comprehensive surveying, they would just bulk it into a generic number, an average number, and it would be included with the salary survey, with your salaries. What we were looking at with that salary survey was to come up with a low, medium, high so that we knew where people would sit, when we would hire in the future. When we had discussed this at board meetings, we just didn't have an understanding of where people were in relation to, in comparison with our neighbors and whether we were offering the right salaries or the wrong salaries, whether increases every year were appropriate or inappropriate, were people being paid too much, too little. And that was, that was the purpose behind the salary survey to start with. And then also, if we were going to hire somebody, so the police department has, let's say they're going to hire, they've got a lieutenant, they want to hire a captain, what would that, what would that salary be? Well, we can look at this survey and kind of say, here's the range, all we're talking about is a range, low, high. How many years does that person have? What kind of education does that person have? What kind of benefits do they have from their other, their other job? What kind of vacation? What kind of retirement? We can then look at that as a whole, but we, at least we know with a salary, where we can put that and not go over where it should be in comparison with everybody else that's on, on the salary schedule. So, that's kind of where, where we went with, with this. We also, what we didn't get to at the bottom was, we had it set up in two different forms. We had one was just a salary schedule and it showed you what the ranges were from low, medium to, to high. For the police department, we had it set up as a step increase, so every year there would be an increase along with a cola raise. If you wanted to include that for employees, saying that you wanted to see that increase of three, 2.5, 3% every year, plus whatever the cola amount would be that you would add on to that. It isn't that you were going to adopt it, but it was a comparison, it was to show you what that looked like so that you had kind of an idea of- And we're going to take forever to get there. So, this is the way it breaks down into all the divisions for the jobs. So, we have the listings. But for the police department, we did this because we were talking about ways to incentivize the police department, how do we get people to stay and how do we get them to join us? This was one of the ideas is that the police department, what the chief was hearing was that nobody knew what their increase was going to be year to year. They felt it was just at the whim of the Board of Alderman. It wasn't at the whim, I mean, you were looking at what cost of living was, but that's how they felt. So, here you have definitive increases for patrolman one, patrolman two, patrolman three. Those are the levels that we looked at. And then here's the step increases year to year. So, that's a possibility. Then you know when you're hired, what your number's going to be where you start, and you may be higher than that, and you look at what the education is, you look at what the experience is, and you put them on that scale and then they would increase there. They would eventually end up tapping out somewhere along the line, except we would look at increases based on the consumer price index and CBIZ will provide that for the next five years on what those numbers should be. So, these would go up, all of them will go up, but that was a possibility. And that's why you have these, these positions, so the P3 is a sergeant, P2 is a corporal, P1 is a police officer. Or you just have your salaries, or you just have your salaries, which shows you the low, medium, high, and you, you just, if you eventually can cap out, and these will go up based on some of the, some information from CBIZ, but you could eventually cap out and then you give somebody a standard, just a year-end, not a year-end bonus, but a year-end lump sum pay. It wouldn't be, they wouldn't get an increase, they wouldn't get the percentage, they wouldn't get a merit increase. But that's one of the possi, this is the other way to look at that and this is the other way to set that up. So, that's all, that's all this was meant for. But when you do that, you also need to see where your people are compared to what's going on with your, with your neighbors and with other businesses. And we have some people that are outside the low line and nobody is above the high line. So, we've actually been pretty good with estimating where we need people to be. But yes, you do have some people that are below the minimum based on the survey from other cities and other businesses with live jobs. And that's where you come up with an increase, which is what they write, the recommendations were here. Now, that's if you want to accept, that's if you want to accept making these changes. What I definitely think you should, or what I would recommend, is that we do adopt our pays, this pay scale so that we have some reference when we do budget, when we have somebody to hire in a, in a position such as the tourism director. We were guessing as to what that number should be. We were being told by the tourism groups and others that it should be 60,000 to 70,000. We came up with 55,000 to 60,000 and she took it at 54 with a, with a $1,000 increase when we got through the introductory period. But in some surveys, it came up around 36,000 is what other cities were paying their tourism people. So, but we didn't have that guidance. And I think we made the right decision because we have a little different need for, for a tourism director, much stronger need. So, anyway, you've got 11,000, $11,000, say below the salary range, and that's seven people below the step, that's if you accept the step. And then those numbers will go up. If you don't accept the step, then it's, it would probably stay about the same. But just to kind of capture what we didn't get a chance to talk about at the last meeting, that's what this is about. And I just wanted to kind of clarify that, make you feel a little more comfortable with it. And then, do you want to pursue bringing people up into certain categories, in their categories? Or do you want to just adopt the numbers and we go from there?
I would put that question right back to the two managers and that's you and Jason. Have we given you a tool that allows you to do your job effectively? Can you maintain your current staff without risk of losing employees somewhere? Can you, in an educated manner, can you go out and recruit somebody to a new position and then make a recommendation to the board for a salary? Did this help you or did it not help you?
So, for the police department, you made a big change with the take-home cars and that has made, that has made the biggest difference.
That's right.
So, we have been kind of groping like everybody else is, trying to find the right combination of packages for people. If you were to hire somebody, would the salary scale help?
Oh, I think so and I think, well, I saw the salary survey, the only position that we had below that line, I think, is the guy starting out from the beginning, the probationary officer, if I'm not mistaken, was below that line. So, everybody else is within the low and the, and the medium range. The step program was just, you know, kind of surveying the guys on what they would like to see or what they thought some of the problems were. And if you check with a lot of neighboring departments, they have programs so a guy knows in five years I could be here, in 10 years I'd be here, I'd top out here, four years there is, I mean, nobody really knows. And that's, that's why we kind of talked to Happy about the step program.
And that could be across the board for all employees or it could be, we don't do it.
But I mean, I definitely think that the take-home cars were big and when you look at the salary range, I think you take into account what that value is when you're looking at the salary. I mean, I don't expect to be above the median line or whatever and take-home cars and this benefits package, you know, I think everything needs to be taken into consideration, but if we have that baseline to be able to explain that to the employees, it makes it a lot easier.
I mean, I think we empowered managers to solve a problem and I think they did, they stepped up and they did what was necessary to solve a problem and I don't know what other, again, I caution, let's don't be a solution scrambling around looking for a problem. I don't know that we have a problem to solve.
Jason, I'm glad you brought that up about the compensation package because I know myself and Alderman Smith, you know, brought that up and stuff and even though it wasn't part of our salary study, I think the salary study did accomplish what we asked it to. There was maybe a misunderstanding of what all we thought we were getting, but I do believe that still is an important part, the whole package, you know, of what we're offering. And like I said at the last meeting, if we're talking to- And like I said at the last meeting, if we're talking to a 20-year-old, it's a different scenario than a, somebody older and stuff, and families and stuff, but I just, and as far as a budget item, how can we not talk about it?
And I appreciate the clarification. I think that I got, I think I dove in too quickly before understanding everything, so I appreciate the clarity and I probably should have been a little more calm. I know personally.
Your apology is accepted, that's fine.
Thank you. I like to see a salary scale. As a teacher, I want to know what I'm making, what I'm going to make next, you know, whatever. And also, those salary scales help us understand that if we go do certain training and certain certifications and certain education, if you will, because I was stuck on that a lot, that your salary will be adjusted. So, upon reflection, I think it's a good thing.
I didn't say anything.
Alderman Stager was getting bored because he asked him to move on. Let's move on. Come on now.
That's all I'm saying.
Give us a number.
That's all I'm standing there.
So, do you want to look at the, the proposed increases, or do you want to just look at adopting the pay scale system?
I think that question is, is also for you, though. Do you think the step question, the, the step?
Well, so.
Like, do you think approaching it from that angle is more, I don't know, beneficial to what you would, as far as when you're hiring, when you're?
Is it hamstring you?
Well, yeah, that is another question. I mean, we need to consider all those, but.
If you have a really valuable employee and you're stuck in a step program, and you've got somebody threatening to leave, and you don't have any flexibility, or maybe you do, I don't know.
But at the same time, you've also laid out the step program, right? Does it, so are you saying, does it create complacency, like, in, in a way?
If you have a step program and they realize in a snapshot, I'm just speaking as a teacher. If we know from a snapshot what we're going to make doing whatever, then there, if you want to opt out, you leave. Right? Am I wrong?
Correct.
Because they'll know coming in, what's going on.
Yeah. And you don't have much flexibility to save a really valuable employee.
No. No, that's why.
Chief, what's your opinion on that step?
Then you give them cars to take home. You give them, you know, 100%.
We have a step program, too, that helps us. If we're looking for experienced guys, it gives us a base also, you know, because a lot of departments, your step program is also based off of time in the job, not just time with the city. So if you have somebody with 10 years' experience, you can start them off at a 10-year patrolman, to where now, we, I mean, there's not a whole lot of difference between our probationary patrolman and our senior patrolman. I mean, there's just not a big variance between the two right now.
Do you think it would help?
I definitely think it would, especially getting experienced guys and getting the younger guys to know where they'll be in the future if they want to stay.
And from what you know of other police departments, is this pretty typical, like a step program?
Majority of them around here, they do have some sort of a step program. Now, I haven't seen the.
Not for, not for most.
Not for what you do, but yours is going to be correct.
For public works, yes, and police, yes. For others, others, they just, they get pulled into it as well, because you might as well just make one scale for that group. So, and if we do that, if we want to do the step, the step scale, then we're going to have to have CBIZ go back in there and adopt it for everybody, so that we make sure that we're following that, that program, or you're going to have some.
Do we have to do it for everybody?
You don't have to, but I, how do you, how do you justify if I'm working on this side and they're, they know what they're going to get?
ASU staring at you.
Yeah, in the next, in the next year.
Yeah, but it's, you're looking at different job descriptions, too. Over there, you don't have five employees doing the same job like you do at the police department. You got, they're all doing the same job, providing law enforcement service. You got Sue doing, well, she's city clerk tonight, but I mean, you know, she's our accountant or whatever, treasurer, yeah. Nobody else is filling that position unless she's absent. I mean, it's, so you're presenting.
But the step would be unique to each role, right?
But, you know, it would be.
Is it just based on?
On the three positions.
Then again, the step, the step scale, Mr. Mayor, does seem to work for teachers as well. I mean, if, and I'm just saying.
Well, that just, so that would be across.
That's police.
So your police officers are here, your basic police officers.
Sure.
Your corporal is here, and that, you know, that's, those are yearly moves, and then your sergeant is here.
Well, I was talking about for, for.
Front staff.
The other side.
Right, right.
You're saying that it would look like the city employees?
It would look like this, yeah.
Okay.
So you'd put.
But the scale is based, based on the role.
So the scale would stay, the scale, overall scale would stay the same?
But I'm starting an endpoint and you're going to differ.
That's how that works.
Yeah.
If you're trying to get people up to, you know, the high range.
Happy, one question about that high range. I mean, are we then setting caps?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, it can increase because you look at it every year based on what the CPI is, and then those numbers can go up. But some people are going to get to that top, and then, they don't have an increase at that, the possibility at that point.
Other than your yearly cost of living.
Right.
Yeah.
Cost of living.
Like mayor-wise, you would top out at whatever the years is, and then you just look at your cost of.
But I do, I do want to be careful about cost of living, though, right? Because, because right now, COLA is, are being argued as being like about 8%. And I know teachers don't get the full COLA. So I'm just throwing this out there.
I know, I was going to say, I don't know how many people are giving us.
Okay, just because the COLA's is 8%, I've got one like a nice, Dave, where's our 8% pay increase? But no, okay, so that's not a guarantee is what I'm saying, right, Chief?
Correct. We just know there is some type of a cost of living that the board typically agrees on.
Copy that.
It may not be what they, they say is the cost.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just want to make sure we're clear on that because.
Well, in the data you're talking about, it's going to track lower than just an inflation mark, right, or cost of living mark, because CPI would be tracking, it's more of a durable inflation number. So it's, it's not going to track as high as that.
Well, ours is five. It was, it was five.
Yeah, and that's probably more in line with what you see.
Right, but.
It wouldn't be eight.
But no teacher's ever going to realize five.
Right, correct.
And we still love you, David.
I appreciate that.
All right, so, okay.
So where, where do we go from here?
So the question is, back to, do you want to see a step scale for everybody? Do you want us just to go with a regular scale? And we, you would then make the adjustments every year, but we would at least know where medium, or low, medium, and high is, and if we're keeping them there. And then, we've also found that some employees are below the minimum of average, that's the average minimum, and do you want to bring them up to the median?
I'd like to see a step scale and bring up the low to where they need to be according to the step that we, we adopt.
Okay.
Happy, can we see a financial impact to the city for that also?
I mean, you're looking at.
11,000 something.
Yeah, $11,000 for the total, or maybe it's.
Well, that was to get, I think, everybody that was currently below that median up to, or sorry, below the minimum.
Right, and everything else, we're looking pretty good.
Yeah, so I think it was about 15, almost 16,000 dollars.
Per employee?
No.
No, altogether.
And you could do that, so technically, you could do that over a couple of years. You don't have to do it all at once, but that's.
And again, thank you for clarifying that for me.
No, it's, it's complicated.
It's complicated.
I just need you a little more patient, right, Joe?
So, I guess we are on agreement, that's the next step we want to take with that? So look at a step scale for all municipal employees?
That's what you need to do your job, Happy and Jason, you need that?
They've said that like three times now, right?
I mean, I think for the police department, it's more important than for the city also, but I think you do it for one, you do it for everybody.
Police, fine, yeah, but, I mean, I'm still waiting, Happy's not committed to it, if you ask me.
I'm not, I'm not as big a fan of step increases, just because I haven't used them over the years. But, but I think, I think based on just what's going on around us, it's important to do that. And if we instituted for one side, for the police department, we instituted for the administrative side as well, so that employees on this side can see what their, what their increases would be every year.
So what does that leave our merit increases?
You could still do merit increases, still do merit and COLA. It just, you would probably look at some adjustment with that based on the step.
The step.
How are we doing merits now? We're having the department head come back and recommend a merit increase?
So the board will approve either a percent or a dollar figure, and what we've done is split it in half. You get a COLA raise, and then you get a merit increase. Okay.
Ideally, when does that need to happen, as far as any change or implementation of that?
So they've set it up for August.
Okay.
So we, they, they kind of pushed it out and took into account, you know, various factors. So they, because they knew the board wouldn't be able to do this immediately.
Right, right.
So we can talk about it some, and you don't have an idea.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not being rushed, and it may not be adopted until.
Okay, we are going to move on to work session, business item number five, which is the lease at 44 Plaza Drive.
So unless there's some issue or argument with this, we have looked at multiple locations, trying to find something that's comfortable for staff and for customers coming in. We've looked at three, three different locations around town. What we've bumped into is 44 Plaza Drive. That is a 30 by 100, so it's 30, 3,000 square feet. We can fit everything in there, even the, even the boardroom. And we kind of thought that might be advantageous because, besides talking about moving the board meetings to the firehouse, which the chief has graciously accepted, we have other meetings that we also have to conduct. We can send them up to the park house if necessary, but we could have everything at, at the temporary city hall. We've talked to the Goldenbergs, they've been very, very nice about this. If you want to get into details of the lease, I would recommend you go to closed session. But otherwise, Mark Bishop has given me some feedback. They've been very gracious, saying they'll start, we would start paying, when we would need to reserve it, so to speak. We're looking at, bids will be accepted next, or bids will be, yeah, bids will be open next Tuesday. We'll bring it to the board, probably on the 25th to approve the, to approve the bids for the remodel. We would then look at signing a contract probably in June. We're looking at construction starting in April to September. And then we're looking at six months after that for construction.
Wouldn't start construction until April?
I'm sorry, August. The other eight months.
Okay.
I'm thinking, we'll be back about, no, maybe, actually before April. So we'd be back probably in February, March. And then we would look to move back in April, May, because we're going to need to give ourselves some time at the end of it to, to get back over here. But they're not willing, they're willing to not require that we do a one-year lease. You know, start, stop, that's it. They're willing to do a lease every, every month.
So what are we going to have?
Yeah, yeah.
So what are we going to have to do to make that space workable?
So we have cubicles already. So pretty much, we're just going to move what we got and toss it in there. We'll have to wire it for the servers and all the computer equipment, phones. Phone was approved tonight. The idea behind that is that we could put a phone system back here. It's during construction, but we put in a new phone system, we can tap into that phone system, and then we're, we're live. We don't have to worry about it. We got to clean it, and David wants to paint a wall really, really badly, because it's just kind of blotchy. It's, it's, it's kind of messy, but it, it'll work. It's a temporary location.
So with the move and everything, not a big cost?
That's 1,500 a month, so.
No, I mean, as far as incidental costs, what it'll take to get it, wiring and.
I think, you know, there's enough electric in there for us. It's just going to be laying cables along the wall for the, for the computers and for the phones. I think that's.
Pretty incidental.
Yeah.
So it's your opinion that it's worth spending the money compared to doing the firehouse and the park board?
We can't fit in the park house.
Well, for incidental meetings.
Yeah, for incidental, because we haven't found a space that we could fit, even the other spaces were too small for all of our employees. I mean, we would just be packed and wouldn't really be able to conduct business well.
What's happening downstairs in the basement during this?
You've got the TV station below us, and then on the other side is storage.
Well, so, I mean, what's, what's happening with channel 98?
I mean, it's just staying right there.
Okay.
We are.
Be impacted during the.
Yeah, a little bit, because we'll have some construction, but they're not, they're not live with programming, so, yeah. And we're making improvements so they can get their cameras back in.
I say go for it.
Okay, all right. I'm just, we'll be bringing, I'll be bringing the lease as a, as an ordinance at the next meeting. Just want to make sure nobody had any heartburn about it. Okay, thank you.
Anything else that wants to discuss?
Do you want to recognize something?
Oh, great.
Can we keep the concrete with the duct tape and the.
I'm going to put it, I'm going to bring it to your house, you can put it in your garage. I think you also recognize somebody else that got an award at the chamber dinner?
I did. We did last time.
Yeah, the last meeting.
Did you? Okay. You said something about the.
Yes. But I can say it again. Alderman Claymore was the educator of the year. And then she hung up her ruler and.
Yeah, she gets the award, and then she leaves us. I'm not bitter.
Go out on top.
Yeah, right, exactly.
All right, if there's nothing else, then I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.